Well, thank you. We welcome. In addition, then, we have, of course, Chris Nichols, who is still not a member already.
I know.
Joe Cincato? He is our interim director. We have Joe Cincato, who's going to make a report to us on CAD and dispatch issues. And next to you is Michelle Foster, and she is our interim director of the Crime Lab. That just about covers everyone today. That's today's agenda, and that would be approval of the February 11, 2014 Executive Committee members. Are there any motions?
No.
A motion by Joe, a second by Marty. Is there any discussion, corrections, additions? Mayor, I know that you've read them and scrutinized them.
Yes, I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, that will be our standard update from Mr. Cincato on dispatch, and in particular, I think CAD issues.
Yep. Thank you. We will be starting on negotiations with our final vendor for our CAD project, and that'll be May 21st, which is a week from tomorrow, I believe. We'll be negotiating, myself and our consultant, we'll be negotiating with them. And we'll be negotiating not only the contract for the CAD project, but also for maintenance. Commissioner Bernaby and I have talked. The part of the RFP was a five-year maintenance agreement. We may look and ask for a 10-year maintenance agreement, just to see what it is, because in their initial five-year agreement, they, their maintenance was, I believe it was like $600,000, and if we paid up front for five years, it was reduced by $100,000, $130,000. So there's a big benefit in us looking at prepaying the five-year maintenance agreement, and there may be even a bigger benefit if we went to 10 years. We don't know that. We know what the five years would be, but we're going to open up the door to 10 years, just to see, see what that may be. So that negotiations will start on next week. I don't see it taking very long, a day or so. I'll bring that back to the city, and sheriff, and the Red Center, and the CAD project team, and then finalize that contract. We will then bring it to the commissioners to get their approval, and for the cost and expenses through the tax money, tax, 911 tax, sales tax. Besides that, we have talked about going to a COG, a council of governments, between the city of Canton, Stark County Sheriff, and the Red Center, in lieu of the SCOG handling the day-to-day operations of the CAD. We would probably look at that as a COG, council of governments, between them three entities, because they're the ones that would be responsible for the maintenance of that project. Not necessarily the purchase of the CAD, but the maintenance of that. So Commissioner Bernaby and I have talked about bylaws that we would present to these three groups, and try to create this COG. If, once that is created, then there's a place for that CAD to go. The county is not going to run that CAD. They will then either give to or lease to that COG, and then we would have a countywide CAD system, computer-aided dispatch system, not only for those three dispatch centers, who are the initial three, but has the ability to be connected to all of the other four dispatch centers that exist. So it is a system that is capable of taking care of a whole county. We'll initially start with three groups, and hopefully we can get Alliance, North Canton, and others connected to it. The project, the RFP included those. We start off with the three. The connection will be, we'll be using the same connection as we are our 911 system, so the connection is there to do. So we feel pretty good about it. I think we can move forward with it. I think our negotiations will go, I think will go well. We have discussed with the city of Canton, and with the sheriff's department, and the Red Center, about a records management system, which would be, that wouldn't be connected, it would be connected to the CAD, but the project are two different projects. And the reason that we did meet with our vendor to talk about RMS is because we felt that with the two, if we went with the CAD, that we could get a better price for RMS. And I know the city is looking for RMS. The sheriff is definitely looking for RMS, records management. And I'm not sure Jackson Township, the police, if they were looking at it or not. So we did get a, we did have a meeting with them, and they committed to a demo for us. We're also with the RMS system, records management, and we got what we thought was a pretty good price on that also. So we're trying to leverage the two, and that if this company knows that there's a possibility of getting RMS, it would help us with us getting our CAD. Leverage negotiations, pricing, as you all have been a part of that, and know how that works out. So.
The price range of the capital purchase of the CAD is approximately?
Approximately 1.5. I think the last quote that we got was about 1.45, and again, we'll be looking at that, the maintenance, and we're looking at the maintenance. We would probably go to the commissioners and ask them to prepay the maintenance, and then have the COG come together and pay them back. Because I'm not sure that we could get the three entities to upfront all five years of that. If the maintenance would be at what we think it is, at about, if it's about $500,000 for, for the five years, that would mean about $33,000 per entity. And Mayor, I think you're probably at 60, 65 now, with your maintenance for your present CAD condition.
I'd be at 25 now. I'll have to check in, though.
And the sheriff, and that's about what the Red Center's paying. So I think the maintenance agreement with these three groups would be, is right there. I think we're in good shape with that. And so that's about what it is.
And we've discussed this in multiple forums, but just to make sure, particularly, John, since you're here, and Joe, again, the ballpark, 1.5 million dollar capital purchase being paid by county government. The main thing, so it's always been contemplated, though, that that $100,000 per year would be paid by whoever the users are of the system. And again, based upon our understanding of Canton's circumstance, who desires to obtain a new CAD, the sheriff desires to obtain a new CAD, and the Red Center has certainly discussed participating in this. If they were to do so, they're fairly comparable sizes by way of runs and population and then other statistics. Probably, effectively, one-third shareowners of this thing. We create a COG, again, so that there'd be a formula of some sort, that if at some point in time, you know, North Canton, or Alliance, or someone else wanted to participate in this, there'd be a buy-in, not a capital buy-in, again, because the county's paid for that, but a buy-in of that share of $100,000. So everybody else's might go down to 90, and the new person in might be the new political subdivision might be paying, you know, the 10, or 5, or depending again on their size and other things and so forth. So we want to structure it so that there'll be, you know, the ability to, with an objective standard for anyone that's presently not entering into this at the beginning to do so. And of course, this is something that requires contractual approval from any participating political subdivision or subdivisions and so forth. So we need to draw up those kinds of contractual documents that we can all take a look at, and then we'll circulate those, and try to get a fixed price after May 21, and circulate something to everybody, to see if this is a go or not. Again, we did discuss the COG, we discussed that at the last meeting we had. The reason we think that we need a new COG, you know, it's on top of existing ones. SCOG does not work because of the funding agreement. We're funded solely through local government funding from all 35 political subdivisions, and so if you weren't participating, there was no way really to divide that up among everyone. It doesn't work to use the existing system that the Red Center has logic, because again, that's a structure just between the 22 or 23 entities out there for dispatching, and they have a different formula. And so really, we need a formula that deals with the three entities and a buy-in for others. So that's why we're looking at it, you know, the merit or not, the idea that county government operated. I think that there's probably more confidence in everybody's minds if we create a COG, because that way, everybody going into this thing are equal players and have equal shares of it. And whether or not you have, you know, confidence in today's county government, and I don't know whether you do or don't, and so forth, we don't know what tomorrow's county government will be. So I think that we're always safer, you know, with probably a COG type of structure.
I trust the people to make the decisions at county level.
There tomorrow, okay.
No, this is, I'm excited about this. This is very, very exciting, in reference to not only being able to get the upgrade for the city of Canton, but for the opportunity to bring these three units together with the ability to add everybody else as you evolve. And I know Randy has been, you know, talking about this since I've known him, but this is just one part of it. But so I just, I think it's good stuff, and we're happy to be part of it.
Just two additional points. One is that we feel comfortable using sales tax dollars, even though it's three entities, because at this point in time, they dispatch for about 75 percent of the population in Stark County. But number two, also, anybody else can come in. We're not denying any, any dispatch center from coming in, so we're comfortable for that. And I forgot my second point, so.
That was the sales, that was the 911 sales tax.
Well, he said 911. It's actually the criminal justice system sales tax money. But oh, this is the old money that was set aside, but it's really not a 911 sales tax. It was just that quarter percent, part of that money that was set aside.
But the money was set aside for?
It was set aside.
For 911?
I'm not sure if it was set aside for 911 or such, but.
I don't know what you did sense it was collected, but it was collected.
Why it was in the act of putting that?
Joe, on the record management thing?
Yes.
You can give me a call tomorrow. There might be a couple other options.
Okay.
At least to throw out there, to look at, that might already be in place, that can be utilized.
Okay, we'll do that. And records management, on a countywide level, and we talked about that especially on the police side, is that if you have a criminal that's in Canton, and you have a records management system for that criminal in Canton, that's where it stays. But if you have a countywide records management system that includes that criminal, it goes to Jackson, it goes to Maslin, it goes to, it could go to Alliance if they tied into that RMS system. It would go to the sheriff. I mean, you share all of that information that today is just in your own, your own niche, and you share that with everybody else. And we think, even though that's not part of my CAD, my position for CAD, it's really an important thing for the county. And I know, I think, the mayor, I think you are interested in the RMS.
Absolutely, because we've instructed the criminals to stay within their own communities, but they don't listen to us. So it would be very helpful when they, when they, you know, get online.
We don't need.
You appreciate it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
A couple other points for all you to think back. Really, the biggest part of this is really, it does enhance safety. It's the first time that we'll have the capability for a lot of entities. You know, the Red Center brings 22 different entities. The sheriff covers a lot of political subdivisions. To actually see where we're at. Those arguments is that Plain Township, or is it a Jackson Township call on Whipple? There will be, a lot of those calls will be solved by this CAD system. It's the first real step to regionalize dispatching, because it does give us that capability. I just can't imagine how much better things are going to be once this gets into play. And the ones that are not participating, I believe, one day, they'll just about financially have, when I remember looking at the numbers, some of the ones like North Canton and Perry Township, it'll just become so financially better to get into a dispatch, it's going to happen. And then on the downside, Tom, the only thing that I see that needs to be looked at for legal side is, I don't know, since the Red Center is a COG, and it represents 22 different political subdivisions, I don't know if a COG can contract with a COG. You might have to sign 22 different contracts. So it's something we need to look at.
We did discuss.
So we have SCOG, we have a COG.
Yeah.
And then you're going to have a COG inside the SCOG. I don't know. I'm confused.
And then lastly, Mary Healy and myself, representatives of Jackson and Canton, are also working on contracting with this company. I believe the city's already entered a contract or is close to it. And we are leveraging to get costs down for the financial tax. Jackson has, in fact, I had lunch with Pat from your department and New World in reference to Jackson. So we are leveraging these costs, the RMS system, the financial system. And the financial system brings a whole lot of other things to the city or to Jackson Township. There's a collection system involved. I think you're even using it for billing for water and things like that. So.
It's a new day. It really is.
I'm just thinking, while that information coming in from the original stop in the street somewhere can go back to government, whether it's fire for billing, or police for calls later that they're going to have, you know, how many wrecks do you have in such and such an area? All that can be loaded one time now from the CAD system, instead of re-entering it back into a police department later. So we really are moving on this thing to broaden the whole county.
Tom, I remember my last point. I think I would like to make it, because I think, I know it is, trust me. But I, you know, originally, as you know, we wanted to bring all the dispatch centers into one or two buildings and have one big dispatch center. But what we've created here is a virtual dispatch center, a countywide center, that will be connected by technology. So in essence, we haven't reduced dispatch numbers, but we will have the ability to connect all of our dispatch centers together, both from a CAD standpoint and a 911 system standpoint. And that's what was our goal. I mean, our goal is to bring everybody into one. But this will still create a countywide dispatch system within Stark County. I think it's a great thing. It's technology, it's the cloud, but I think it's a step in the right direction. And someday, when I'm gone, somebody's going to think of bringing everybody into one building. It's going to be cheaper, but.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We should try that.
I think we saw it.
Yeah, we did think about it. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Well, you know, we will not name a building after you, but we will.
I don't want a building.
No, we're going to name a cloud after you, though.
That's good. Flora Way.
Not on a clear day, we won't think of you.
I understand.
Got it. Anything else on dispatch CAD or otherwise? And again, we want to keep working with Alliance and everybody else like that, to hope to get you to participate in this. And I think this is something probably that's potentially really doable for all of us, because with the capital purchase being purchased out of the sales tax dollars, it's just the making side of the thing is relatively small. And Minerva, we thought you guys locked.
It was our idea.
Crime Lab update.
Michelle Runn, what?
Would indicate that we have our, you know, Crime Lab committee, this small subcommittee in place, and we just need to meet effectively on a monthly basis, and that is Michelle and myself, and Chris, Chief Weller from Canton, Sheriff Meyer, and Andrea Berry from Canton. So the six or seven of us get together on a fairly regular basis, pick items around. Michelle?
Okay. If there's something, please interject, Chris. Tracker system, which was our evidence, and barcoding and electronic submission for lab reports or exam requests.
Want to tell us more about that, too, just?
Tracker system actually was a system that was implemented for police departments for barcoding their evidence, and also being able to do electronic inventory of evidence. We sort of took the system and we created virtual property rooms for all of the agencies we serve. So now they can go into our property room, our main property room, and into their own individual little property room, put in the evidence that they're going to bring to us. They, at that time, they fill out all the information we need for our exam request. They just bring the evidence in, and we scan it in. We do, they're in and out. We've probably cut the actual time for the officer coming in to drop the evidence is probably now more than a quarter of the time. We've cut off like three-quarters of the time that they have to actually spend with us, actually doing that. It also allows us now to do an electronic barcoding for the transfer within the laboratory and the internal chain of custody. So the system itself went online on April 1st, and no, we told everybody it wasn't a joke. It's been, we've gotten very positive impact from all the agencies. They like being able to go on, see their evidence from this system. They'll be able to see if somebody took the evidence out to take it out for analysis. So now when an officer calls, he can see, oh, look, Jay had that item of evidence. He took it into his custody. If I have any questions on that, I just need to contact Jay. I don't need to go through, you know, calling the lab, having them search. I can see those things myself.
So it's online. So if I'm sending Alliance, I can check the evidence that is in the Crime Lab?
And each department has their own, it's a secure system at which Alliance, when they put input their stuff, they can't see other police agencies. We have trained all of the agencies, the submitting agencies, right now. There's a few little stragglers here and there that we're catching when they actually bring in the evidence. So far, everybody, it's been very simple for everyone. One of our next phases is actually to get in contact with the law departments and the prosecutor's offices, to give them potentially a read-only access. So if they're looking for something for court, they'll be able to get online and see in that particular, was it brought to our lab? And since there is evidence going both places now, to Canton Stark as well as BCI, prosecutor's offices would be able to go online, see where that evidence is, if it came to us, and then be able to find out where it's at. So we're very, we've been very pleased. The sheriff's department and Canton Police currently have the system. So there, it's even easier for them, because they really didn't have any training for their personnel, because they've been using it. And so their evidence is actually directly imported from their system to ours. So their system is even a lot quicker, because they already have the barcodes in place.
Can you give us an example? I'd like to check on it. What status of the analysis of Marty Chapman's DNA?
And that would be a very simple process for us to be able to go in and check where that evidence is.
So Michelle, does that save a person's time?
It's, it's more of a time saver for the agencies. We still, on our end, have some work, but it's drastically cut even our time, as far as the handling of the evidence. So our goal actually is for the criminalist assistant position to be, basically be able to take on that role of the evidence receiver. So it will still allow us to free up our analysts, and they'll be able to do the evidence receiver, which originally, that criminalist assistant position, that's what it was. It was not only a clerical position, but it was an evidence receivable position.
What departments have yet to come online?
Some of the really smaller agencies, just recently, the other week, adult parole came in. So we sent out announcements for all of the, you know, all the agencies, but some of the agencies, they submit so infrequently. I'd say our regular customers, and even our small-scale customers, we've already had them in for training, Minerva being one of them. And it's just like the stragglers, Stark Parks, you know, or adult parole, or, so we are catching some people as they come in.
And if I could just add to my list of my small working group, I forgot, Chief Pomesky from Perry Township. He is the president of the Stark County Police Chiefs Association, and he has been there dozens of weeks at the Crime Lab Committee. He's been a great addition also.
And our other update was in our combined DNA index system. Our local DNA database has been transferred now to BCI, and they will be sending out any, they're going to maintain that database. So any hits, any future associations in the DNA database, they'll be contacting the local law enforcement agencies in that regard. So that transfer actually took about a day and a half process, day and a half, two days. And really, it was all done by the CODIS DNA database people. So.
If a piece of evidence goes to the state, to BCI, is that somehow logged or shown in your new program?
That is not shown in our new program. Our new program is just for agencies submitting items to us. What they will be able to see is that they'll be able to check and see if Minerva brought that item into us. And if it's not.
It's not in the database, then it had to have gone to the state.
Right. Or back at the agency, which they may need to arrange to have it submitted in some instances.
The last thing on the database transfer that will probably come up, mention it at the general membership meeting, that we'll need to come through for approval, is kind of a cart after the horse, but we're finalizing, been working for the last month with BCI, on a memorandum of understanding, with all the data that we transferred, just what we're keeping in-house, what they're having, if there's a case that we transferred up, that they need evidence of, of just who transfers what information, how that database and access works, moving forward. I don't think there are any, I mean, it was pretty boilerplate. There weren't, there was just some things we tightened down with it. I just got an email this morning with the updated MOU, just with all the changes that Michelle and her group had made. And now that's got more of the boilerplate language to get that to, Tom had it reviewed, just to kind of tighten that down on the backside. But that will be coming before the body, probably in the next round of meetings.
Shouldn't that come before the executive committee first?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll bring that through. We wanted to get all the language and really get it to more of a final format first, before it came through.
So really, we were tying up the loose ends with regard to our Crime Lab getting out of the DNA business that we've discussed over the last, you know, six to nine months.
Both our lab and BCI wanted to proceed on this as efficiently as possible, because these investigative leads from this DNA database are important. They're important to the law enforcement investigation and in this process. So yeah, this, we're trying to work this out to be as smooth of a transition as possible. And so far, we had our first case, which we submitted, and that transfer went fine. So we're hoping that as things proceed, they'll just go smoothly, and they'll let us know what they need, and we'll do the transfer of the information.
Crime Lab issues?
Personnel. We do have Justin Rodriguez, our new analyst, is in training right now. It's probably like a year, year-long process.
Yes.
For certifications and all of that. So we're glad we got him in and started. We are moving forward with the hire of the administrative, we've had a temporary administrative assistant for about the last six months. We're moving forward. The job description's been updated to make that a permanent hire, and get an actual employee in there, then that we can, with like with evidence and utilizing that person, we never wanted to get a temporary person involved with evidence receipt in anything that way. So by getting that full-time employee in, we have a little more control, and, you know, the ability to utilize that position maybe for more, more than just answering phones and filing and copying, get that person in there. We've made some changes to the job description, to hopefully tighten it down to give us a little more select group, because it is a union position within the city. Friday morning, I believe, civil services meeting to approve that job description, hopefully. Then, once they do that, it'll be posted for at least four or five days that needs to be opened, and then we will see what kind of responses we get from those. So hopefully, here relatively soon, we can get that position solidified.
Tell us a little bit about everybody, about accreditation and where we stand on that.
Currently, right now, we're in the process of, unfortunately, I wish it was an easy process, but it's not just a matter of submitting a two-page application. It actually is a full audit document that has to be sent to them. Currently, we are in the process, I'm in the process of completing that. One area that we're working on currently is what's called uncertainty of measurement, which basically means that when you give a, and this is applicable to any type of result that we release that has a legal basis. Drug weights have a legal basis. Firearms for sawed-off shotguns have a legal basis for those measurements. They want us to start supplying a range in regards to the measurement. It's 16 inches plus or minus a 32th of an inch. So we are actually in the process of tabulating data and getting all that together, so we can include that in our reports. And that will be applicable to drug chemistry. That'll be applicable to the firearms and fingerprints, and that will be applicable to our results in terms of the alcohol analysis that we perform.
And again, for everybody, just general information, what are the primary areas of analysis that you're making currently?
We are going to go for accreditation in the areas of drug chemistry, controlled substances, also in alcohol analysis, in biologicals. And that includes also postmortem samples for the coroner's office, as well as firearms examinations, gunshot residues, serial number restoration, the latent fingerprints, and also the latent fingerprint processing, as well as comparisons. So we will be covering both those areas. For accreditation purposes, a question arose as far as why we don't do some of the other disciplines that we had cut back on, and the reason being is, in order for them to do the audit, they need casework. And there is a system set up within the accreditation process, that if we want to re-implement a service, for instance, fire debris, we can go ahead and have that section itself, sort of like another mini audit, can be done, to get that system accredited, that discipline, I should say. So there is steps in process for us trying to rebuild the various services, depending on what the law enforcement agencies need or require.
And on the accreditation process, once Michelle gets that report submitted, it's really in Asliat's hands.
Yes.
As to the timing, then, of when they set up their onsite. Really, the last gating factor we have is getting that, that report submitted to them. And then, once that's in, they do their reviews, they'll assign it. And then once that's in, they do their reviews, they'll assign an auditor and start to work on the scheduling of it before they-
Who's the accreditation agency?
It's the American Society of Crime Lab Directors. Lab Accreditation Board. It's a mouthful.
Sounds like it's followed by Sherlock.
And, yeah, you know, I want to emphasize for everybody here and John, you know, for Alliance, and, you know, anything you do here, by the way, for your police chief, any issues or concerns that they may have with the crime lab or otherwise, you know, we're the, a group that wants to hear about them, we don't want to cover them up, so forth, but we want to fix it and make this thing work right and well for everybody, so just to let you know. I keep getting feedback, we keep talking to Mike Fickers, who's now doing the direct indictment program, and we'll probably ramp that, ramp that up, and we've had, you know, many meetings on that. But as that gets larger, of course, he's more and more dependent upon our crime lab to get a quick analysis back on, on different things. I mean, the whole, really, on some cases, where there is DNA, for example, now that we're sending that up to BCI, we never process, you know, we're not processing DNA anyways, but in some cases, by the way, that may slow down the direct indictment process, but almost everything else, we're keeping in-house form, and so, yeah.
And the director of indictment's been going so-
Our law director also is now participating in the direct indictment program, saving a lot of time on court, especially with our officers' time, so. And as far as, you know, we've, you know, we've, we've had our issues with the crime lab, but I, I think it's a matter of re-establishing trust and credibility, and I got to give you credit in that area, very much so.
Thank you. We are, we want to make things, we want to, we want to build back, and it's just going to take some time. But I think we've made positive effort in doing that.
And of course, we want to keep Alliance involved in as many things as we can. We just recently amended our corrections planning board by laws, did we not have the Alliance law director, I don't know if the law director-
Yes, and the judge.
...have been on it. And the judge. So again, that's a, that's an entity that meets, what, every month or every two months?
Every month on the, on the general level. Every month on the, every other month on the general level.
Really, that's a large participation from all of the judges and law enforcement and so forth, so many of these same issues are discussed, you know, I had that meeting too, so appreciate that participation. Anything else on crime lab today?
Michelle, do you have any relationship, feedback from BCI on the DNA stuff?
In terms of?
Well, the issue that's coming up is, the majority of DNA actually goes down, is not from a case. I mean, they're mandatory. They're almost, there's a ton of laws out there, they're DNA mandatory. The officers have these DNA kits that they carry in their car, and they do a swab, and they must send them in. And what we're finding is, we're getting docket entries that say DNA's been reported and because the officer sent it down. And then what happens is, it wasn't a good sample. And then they come back and say, we really don't have your DNA. So the next time the guy gets arrested, they read DNA was taken, they don't take it, because nobody's coming in and taking it back out when it was a bad sample. Is there any suggestions of how we could fix that?
You know, I think, I think that we really haven't spoken directly with BCI because I know that that was an issue North Canton had brought back to our attention because of C.J.'s showing, C.J.'s showing that the sample was collected, so they're not collecting it only to find out it wasn't actually in the database. But I think we can touch base with them and see what avenue, because it would be, in my opinion, would be a communication from, somehow working out a communication from BCI to the agencies to let them know it wasn't a suitable sample. I think that's where the communication link has been lost. The samples are being sent as required, but there's no communication back to say whether that has been entered. I didn't know if anything had been worked on and C.J.'s ended up having-
When I retired, during the process of trying to get an actual line so that we could read their database-
Read it to see that it was-
When they reported to CODIS, we would see the same thing.
Okay.
And I don't think that happened because they were in the process of having a, an issue with their database, if you remember at the time.
Right.
But if you could help with that, maybe a call down there if you can help?
This is probably a good time, too, because we're definitely on their radar for the DNA section, just because of moving everything up there, so it's probably a good time.
And the case that she was talking about, it was a North Canton case, they, you know, they took somebody's cigarette butt, they sent it down, and it was a case that was mandatory, showed that it was collected, and then, two years later, the guy did something. They thought it had his DNA because it said DNA taken. They didn't have an match because it was never enough there to put it into the database.
From the law enforcement agency standpoint, they thought he was in there, so when they put in the, the item of evidence and it didn't come back as a match, they thought that he was ruled out as a suspect, when in fact, they couldn't make that determination because the sample was never in there to actually have the comparisons done.
I was glad, Nick, if you could maybe help us with that, if I would be, they have a two-way street, so they're communicating back since we're doing so much to get information to them.
Okay.
And, Michelle, status of backlog, how are we doing on backlog in all the cases?
January and February's are complete. So April, we have-
What happened to March?
Oh, I'm sorry, March. March, we have-
It was a big buck, too.
Yeah. January, February are complete. March, we have, all the stuff for March is currently, we have one case and it's still pending. April, we still have some cases. So we are, we got a little backlog in the firearms and fingerprints with getting the tracker system online, but Larry's back since the, the tracker has gone smoothly, so we're going to see now what he can maintain, at least at this point, being more full-time. But yes, it's, it's been going well. It's been going well. The drug chemistry section has been doing great. Jennifer is still doing primarily marijuana, but most of our submissions are still marijuana. So she's been able to take a big load off of the drug chemistry section just with her training completion and that.
And again, we want to keep that, you know, as current as is reasonable, and you understand the standards-
Yes.
...to the extent that we can't keep it current because something happens, another thing happens, let's transfer some of those cases to BCI, you know, until we get back into a current condition, so. Anything else, Michelle, or for-
I did, and I didn't know whether this is the place or not, but I just did get a notice as a potential future point for consideration. Today, I just got our service contracts for our drug chemistry instruments, which are our workhorses for that section. And as it turns out, that those instruments, which, we purchased two of them back in 2000, and the other one was in 2002, and those are actually going to be within a two-year period, we have a two-year window at which they're going to stop, I guess, stop service or not support those instruments. So we, we are going to be discussing the potential for that possibility of looking into new instrumentation for that section.
And what's the approximate cost of new instrumentation?
The two instruments, as far as the drug chemistry, they're about 85,000 ballpark, about 85,000 apiece. The instrument that we use currently that does our alcohol analysis, we're looking at about half that, about forty, about 46,000 for that instrument. We have worked these instruments, and we have gotten a long, long life out of them. So, but they did, I did call them to verify because they just mentioned that in the contract. They says they're looking right now at a two-year window. It's not that they won't continue to come out to look at them, it's just that they may not have parts available for certain things. So it is something that I'm hoping that we can maybe look at and consider what our options might be and-
So from, again, from a budgetary perspective, then on the capital side, we're looking at two instruments at 85, so 170,000 ballpark, and another 46.
Right. And currently, according to Jay, the alcohol, the instrument that we use for the alcohol analysis, that's probably would be the backburner one, because right now, it's been, it's been still doing a good service for us, and it's an instrument that doesn't need as much service as the other two.
And just as a footnote, the capital, another capital need that we have at the crime lab that Michelle's currently researching is just an upgrade of the computers that are there. But we've got a number of computer, a couple there still operating under the seven, a couple there on XP.
We have, we have-
It's a mishmash, and some of the systems that we need to interact with don't support that interaction anymore. So we're, and we're running into that. I know at the county, at a number, at a number of offices, that we need to do some computer upgrades as well, so. Michelle is researching some computer upgrades there and working with Pat Park and trying to get some things put together, and then we can work that into the budget this year and provide those updates here through the executive committee and the general membership.
Our biggest crucial ones on that are our, our workstations for our APIS, which is our fingerprint system. We received a notification from, from Leads, which is who we maintain our communication line, and they want to have some sort of idea of when we're going to transition out of these XP terminals because they don't want them on their system. So we were, we were just recently notified, and we'll put together, once we have a ballpark idea, how, it is just, it'll be two computers, but they are very adamant about, because of the security issues related to the XPs, that they want them off of the Lead system.
And the approximate cost of those upgrades?
For, it's, it's about $1,000 a pop all in, and that's why we're also looking at-
It ends up being like $200.
Because it's not a real, it's not a real, because we don't have a huge number of computers, and we're running into those issues with some of the others, we're also just upgrading everything because they're all five, six, seven years old.
It sounds like we're talking roughly about $220,000 to upgrade everything, if you were to do it all at once. Are there, or have you given some consideration to any grant applications, either at the federal or state level, to assist with that?
I would have to look into that. I am not sure. As far as the Leads' computer terminals, we just found out, and the grant, they do have grants for replacing those computers, but the deadline for that, we found out on Friday, I think it was, and the deadline for the grant was this Monday. So that was sort of an out.
It was yesterday?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, the biggest-
That's why the nice fiscal period.
The 85 and the 46, we just got that information recently, so we will certainly look at grant after that.
Yeah.
Take free money first, and then work your way backwards, and certainly look at every opportunity we can, but-
We really, from the crime lab's perspective, we have very limited experience with the grants other than the ones that were for DNA, so I can also ask some of the other lab directors what's some of the other grants, forensic grants that they've utilized for equipments as well.
Is there a statewide lab directors association?
In fact, there is. It's the Forensic Institute of Ohio, also has an Ohio Association of Crime Labs Directors, and they're moving us up for June, their next meeting, and so I'm hoping to attend that as well, to be able to touch base with them to see.
Have you been attending those meetings?
I attended my first one, the very first one, just this year, and hope to be able to continue to attend those, to get more input from the other directors.
Now, please, do, I know we would encourage you to do that, please, and take a look, accept it you can early on, the availability of grants and all of these areas. Anything else, Chris, Michelle? Moving onward, Mr.-
The, everyone-
All-
Hopefully, everyone got, tried to hand a copy of the financial report around. Just a few highlights. So with the revenues at the top, you'll see we're at 16.9% of our budgeted revenue. Primarily, that's just a, a timing thing of when the payments from the City of Canton and Stark County are coming in. As the monthly local government funds are distributed by the Stark County auditor, then the auditor basically invoices out to the county and to the City of Canton on a monthly basis for those, those portions. So it's just a matter of that timing catching up, so that will catch up over time. Down with the expenses, 33% of the way through the year, through April, we're at about 22% of the budget, so we are running, in general, a little behind. Primarily, that's because some of the, when the budget was built for this year, the evidence manager position was budgeted for the full year, so obviously, we hadn't filled that position, so that gives us a little, a little cushion there. The new analyst that we hired, when the budget was built, I used the midpoint of the range. It's a $20,000 range for that position. I budgeted at the midpoint because he was coming straight out of college. We hired him at the bottom end, so there's another, some additional monies that are there as well. So really, we should be running, all things being equal, unless something crazy comes up this year, I would anticipate, where we had budgeted actually having to dip into our carryover by 20,000, you know, depending on what we do with computers and maybe some other things, we should actually be running within our revenues for this year as they stand. But certainly, painting changes, we'll pass that along. A couple of the line items, you'll see that the crime lab purchase services is actually running a little ahead than the 33% of the way we are through the year. That's primarily our vehicle leases we pay on an annual basis. Those have already been paid earlier in the year. Likewise, our insurance has been paid earlier in the year. So that's why that, that line item is just running ahead of where you would expect at 33% of the way through the year, so that should normalize as the year goes, goes along. But all in all, financially, we should be operating within our budget, actually coming in underneath through the year, which, again, we'll bring it back before this board, but hopefully, you know, that will give us the opportunity to address the computer issues and maybe some of the other capital needs and put a crime lab within the budget that we actually had in place without having to go into the carryover.
Questions on this, any additions for us? Madam Treasurer?
No, that's good. The presentation. I assume the timing also would be on the expense side as well, on that, other's purchase services would be the payroll-
Yeah.
...because it goes through-
Because we only have one quarter come in, so, and that gets built quarterly, so that's why that would run behind a little bit.
Thank you. Your municipal's report. Any suggestions? There, do you not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move.
It's a move.
I hear it's a move, but where does that one come from?
One came from there.
Okay. Randy and Craig, second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 2:45 PM.